Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the McIntosh County Board of Education's work session for September twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two. If you would please stand for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear heavenly Father, we do thank you for this day, for the gift of your son, Jesus Christ, for your continued guidance for us, for our staff, and for our school system, and we pray for our continued success in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number three is Citizens Address the Board. Okay, item four is Approval of the Work Session Agenda. Cover agenda items before us. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Okay, motion by Mr. Hewitt, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. MacGyver. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries four zero. Item number five is Items of Information. I'll turn it over to Dr. Hewitt.
Good evening, everyone. Just as an administrative note that we do have Mr. MacGyver on telephone participating in this meeting. First thing here, going there and wanting to see the success, progress reports went out, just to kind of remind the school is already in, and we've already gotten to the part where grades are out for our parents and for our students. And it does seem to be that we've off to a great start this school year. If you remember, the last two years, we've had to take a step back through COVID, and we're on track. We're doing well. I almost hate to say the word COVID because we have zero, zero cases at the same time. So things are good. Next area up here is, you know, we've been talking about literacy for the last three years and how our community's doing, and how our system's doing as a whole. We did see significant progress last year for our students, and as I've told you in the past, we typically gauge based on third grade scores. That's a key factor. There's also another test that goes out. It's a national test, and I'm gonna ask Ms. Sheets to come over and give a brief overview of it. But, you know, they randomly select schools across the country to take this test, and they usually do it in fourth and eighth grade. And so they take a reading test and they take a math test, and she's gonna hit the highlights of the most recent report that came out in order for you to kind of understand where we are as this small community as compared to the nation.
All right, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
All right, so the nation's report cards. So these are gonna be reading and math scores for our nation. The National Assessment of Educational Progress. It's every two years, I think Dr. Hewitt's saying, said that, students in grades four, eight, and twelve grades. And they do, like he said, a random sample, and they do a long-term trend. So this has been going on since nineteen seventy. In any case, in two thousand and twenty-two, they did a special administration of NAEP, and we'll see what they mean by special administration in the last slide. So they looked at reading and math data and how that data may have been affected by COVID. And the average scores for age nine students in winter of twenty, and they specifically were looking at students that were in fourth grade. So average scores for students age nine in winter of two thousand and twenty-two declined five points in reading and seven points in math compared to winter of two thousand and twenty-one. Now, this is a big deal for a few different reasons. This is the largest score, average score decline in reading since nineteen ninety, and it's the first ever score decline in math. And so you can remember, while our scores are going up a little bit, the nation's are not. So I feel particularly proud of our schools. It doesn't mean that we really need to be. We're gonna keep on tracking and try really, really hard. But I wanted you to see where the nation is as a whole as a result of this thing. So you can see their chart there for students who start out at two oh eight, and then on up in two thousand and twenty, we're at two twenty and decline from two thousand and twenty-two to two hundred and fifty. So it's a five-point drop, as you can see, and then you can see the seven-point drop.
It's a first-ever drop in math since they've been tracking this in all those years. So, you know, we've got our work ahead of us, but I also feel like we're making progress. And I wanted to make sure that we had a discussion about it, and I wanted to make sure that the people that do get up there and watch this on television and read the newspaper and hear from us that, you know, we're working hard. Our teachers are working extremely hard to overcome the issues of COVID, but this isn't unique to us. And in fact, you know, we're a little better off than what this data shows in the nation as far as decline.
So here's just a little bit more information. And I thought this was really interesting, and it really makes sense, is they took five percentiles to show progress. The tenth, the twenty-fifth, the fiftieth, the seventy-fifth, and the ninetieth. And math and reading scores for students in all five percentile levels declined, but in both subjects, scores were lower for low-performing students. So they declined even more, and I'm gonna show you. So if you look there, you can see that students in the ninetieth percentile dropped two, and then seventy-fifth, three, and then on, you know, fifty percent, four, you know, and on down.
So if you were a low, already a low-performing student.
You dropped even more.
You dropped even more.
And that's typically the way it is. In the same time for math as well.
I hadn't seen that chart. That's good.
And so we, again, were very fortunate that our students did not show this trend. And then the other findings were these that I thought were important. So, of course, this makes sense that greater access to resources for the higher-performing learners, when they were learning remotely, the higher-performer, the students that scored higher, had computers, they had internet access, they had quiet space to work. They had teachers available to help and someone help with their schoolwork. And they were overall more confident. And I thought these last things were interesting only because of our visible learning work, our work with visible learning, because with visible learning, these are the things that we are working to create, is these confident learners that are able to know where they are in their learning. So anyway, they said that these higher performers were not only more confident, but they could recognize when they didn't understand something. That's very important. And that's what we're trying to teach our students to do, also to ask for help when they needed.
Do you think this is indicative of the fact that, you know, we're one-to-one? So, you know, we didn't see the decline like others, but if what they're saying is the higher performers had access to these things. We've made internet access available, 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 even if they didn't take it. We provided the teachers that are there, the government, and that one-to-one initiative, and they don't take it home. That lends towards our overall success and the movement forward.
Well, I also think the board's decision to have our students in school versus staying at home, that's made out of the great decision.
Any questions on the NAEP?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sheets. All right, next area up here, under Goal Area Two, I just wanted to make sure the board was made aware of the requirement that we were selected. I always like how they do this. We were selected to do cross-functional monitoring of our federal programs. So Mr. McNair is gonna do a brief overview of what that means.
I agree with Ms. Sheets' earlier assessment as far as students with disabilities or declining their scores. I think one of the things that has helped us is really the targeted focus on what we were gonna do once we got the computers and stuff in their hands. I was in Atlanta this weekend reading some teachers that formed friends of mine, and one of the things they talked about was a problem in their larger districts is that they felt like the school system lacked focus. And that the urgency to get kids back in school was very slow, and now they're definitely looking for a cushion for that. So I started telling them about what we did, and they were all like, really? You mean that quickly? And you had this with one-to-one computers? So again, we're moving in the right direction. I'm excited about that. Thank you for sharing that, because we are moving in the right direction when it comes to our students and their learning. Wanted to briefly talk about our continuous system of improvement. As you guys know, every time I do a presentation, I'll put the whole child up there. And it's a continuous process where we're looking at the child, looking at all the supports that they could need as far as making sure that they're successful. One of the things that we've been selected, and this happens every four years for all the school, for select school districts in the state, is that they're selected for what's called cross-functional monitoring. The short and skinny of this is with cross-functional monitoring, the Georgia Department of Education basically reviews and audits all of the federal programs in which we receive money for to make sure we're optimizing and managing that money and resources appropriately. So they will send people into our district. They have in the past, but I've been told this time it's gonna be more virtual. And they will actually pull records, federal program records, Title I records, Title III records, special ed records, and review those records to make sure that there are things that are supposed to be in there based on the federal guidelines. The federal handbook for our programs is a thick book, and it actually has a lot of information about the do's and don'ts of what we're supposed to do. We're very fortunate, in my opinion, that we have Ms. Noble working with us through that process. She is definitely the most efficient person I've ever worked with when came to organizing and getting things done. Matter of fact, we've already set the dates up for us actually starting that process and actually getting the records in place. And I think if you spoke to Ms. Franklin, I think we're gonna have February, March around the timeline of having our financial data ready. So again, things are in place. She's already contacted the state, and we're ready to move forward with that. Wanted to briefly kind of tell you a little bit about what happens during that four-year cycle. They're gonna come in, like I said, and basically look at all our programs. The one category we don't wanna fall into based on our record keeping is the high risk. We fall into the high-risk category, then there's gonna be more support and monitoring coming from the state to make sure that our programs and the things that we're doing with federal resources are allocated appropriately. So again, it's one of those checks and balances, and it's a good thing. I know a lot of school districts regret and hate that coming in and hate the people coming in looking at the records. But it really just keeps us on track as far as making sure we're doing things that are responsible and resourceful for our kids and for our district. So again, this is just a way of helping us stay in line with what the federal requirements are. Put up here real quickly, and I won't go into this, because we're gonna be meeting and kind of reviewing this process with you all over the next several months, probably up until March, February, right before we start having to put our data together and talk about this process a little bit more. But it starts basically at that blue button at the bottom that goes up towards the left-hand side. Basically, they conduct the audit. They provide a report via the Georgia Department of Port. So we'll get the information back after they do the audit. After that, they'll basically say, okay, here are the things that you need to correct. Having a corrective action plan is not a bad thing. A corrective action plan in this case basically says, what you're doing is okay, but here's a way to improve it, to even enhance what you're doing federally for these audits, okay? And for those, again, in that red, I hate that red bubble that talks about if we're at risk, here's more work that you're gonna have to do. So we don't wanna get to that part of the process. We wanna make sure that when they come in, that we have everything that they need to have as far as making sure we are successful with that particular audit. The requirements are identified. LDA's are trained if we're not successful. But again, it's all about collecting the data and submitting that paperwork. All that information will be submitted to us via our Georgia Department of Education portal. At that point in time, Ms. Noble and myself will be making another presentation with you guys and letting you know the outcome of our particular audit. Again, these are, I wanted to put these two things up here. These are the two most common internal control problems that they find statewide. It's equipment management, things that we order for our school systems, that's the computers, all the equipment, anything that we order that we use federal funds for. They wanna make sure that there's an asset tag next to it, and that it's used appropriately. The time and effort. In other words, if we hire teachers in to work under federal programs, that we're utilizing them and accounting for them for every, pretty much, minute of the day that they're working in a program. So again, all of this is about making sure that we're following the guidelines to make sure we stay in line with federal regulations. And from what I understand, in our past cross-functional monitoring, we did okay. There were some corrective action things that were taking place. They got corrected. Here we are in this four-year cycle again, and we're gonna be moving forward. But like I said, I will keep you guys updated with that, and as we get closer, tell you more about what's happening with us, and then when you get the final audit, be able to present that information to you, okay? Any questions?
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up here is our annual review of the CTA budget. And so if I could ask Mr. McLean to step forward.
All right, here's the Perkins Five Grants that we received, Dr. Richard, who applied for these grants at the end of the school year. And it's typically what we normally do, the Ag Extended Day, Extended Year, CTA Extended Day, the Supervision, Perkins Five Plus Reserve Grant, and then the Perkins Program Improvement Grant. And then I broke down the Program Improvement. The Program Improvement Grant has to be tied to the overarching needs that Dr. Richard put in, and those are tied to culinary arts, ag, and audiovisual. So most of, the majority of the expendable equipment and supplies is gonna be spent in those areas. But you can see how I broke it down, the purchase services, software for computer science, travel, the CTA, expendable equipment and supplies, do's and bees, audit services. And then the Perkins Five Plus Program Grant, that money is gonna go towards the, in the pathway assessments, the material and the tests. And then there's another section of that that is going to go for a program that they did last year with our students with special needs. And it's a camp that they do during spring break, I think.
Yeah, it is.
Mr. McNair? Any questions?
I'm probably gonna answer this question, Ms. Franklin, but any part of this that we have a match? Do you remember?
The Ag Extended Year, we have to match.
Okay.
Everybody knew that.
I just wanna make sure that was noted for everyone. I knew there was some part of it that we have. No matter whatever it is, we need that part.
And that Ag Extended Day is split between culinary business and audio.
The Ag Extended.
Right, CTA is extended.
The Ag. Yeah, I was gonna say Ag, I'm sorry. CTA is extended.
We knew what you. Any questions at all for Ms. McLean?
Does everyone that applies for this, do they, everybody get the same amount of money or?
No, I mean, there are some still bigger programs.
Bigger, bigger programs, yeah.
They get millions of dollars.
Ah, yeah.
Lots of money. Yeah, lots of money.
I think it's went up some.
It actually went up, I think last year it was like twenty-one thousand, and this year it's twenty-two.
Yeah.
And it is, of course, based on FTE. So FTE, and I look at the FTE for the past couple of years when they don't know. And they should continue to go up because our students have acquired to complete the pathway, and most kids can complete more than that.
We're doing well with that.
Good deal.
Thank you.
Any other questions? You wanna stick around? You're welcome.
Have a great night.
All right, I know at a previous meeting I gave you a copy of the local projects, so could you pull that up for me, please? What we did was this, is that we took a hard look at the school system as a whole and said, you know, these are the things we know we're gonna need to do, make sure our facilities are right, make sure that, you know, we're providing a safe environment and the most conducive area that we can for our students. So when you look at this, the first column that shaded is obviously last year, and so there's items in there that we did. Part of, the biggest bulk of that money went towards the kitchen renovation, okay? So there's money still left over from what we allocated last year. And then we started allocating money for the next four years thereafter. So what you see in this category right here, this is this current school year. So we did purchase a new real mower, already done, and so we still had a balance left. We have the potential to get a couple of new signs that we need. I know MCA, the middle school needs a new sign out front. Technology upgrades, you know, consistently to make sure that we do keep computers in the hands of our kids. They go out of cycle about, what, every four years, four to five years? So this just keeps us continuing that process, and you see that allocation across the board. Bus cameras, we've already done this, you know, we've had, as we rotate, we make sure that there's adequate number of cameras on the buses. The baseball softball field sound system, you know, I really want to look at possibly making that not just baseball softball, but something that can be moved also into the gymnasium. And so if the board approves this, we want something sustainable. And we have for years used the leisure services panels to announce at the baseball and softball games, and we need to be able to have our own systems in place. And then the gymnasium at the high schools, acoustics are awful. But if you've noticed that when we have Michael Heiser's group comes in, we're able to hear everything. So I'd like us to be able to expand and be able to figure out what to do to put something in place there. We did refinish the basketball court at MCA this summer. It's beautiful. If you haven't seen it, you need to take a trip out there. We've talked about the MCA field lights, and I'll share some pictures with you at some point where you'll see the, I'll call them the transformers, but the guts of those lights that are up there that have been exposed to the elements that are just deteriorating. And they've kept it together with tape and bubble gum and glue and everything else that you can imagine. But we also talked about if we did this via lease, it's probably six or seven percent interest. If we pay for it outright, then we'd save money on the interest. And so allocating that, I do think this is something we need to do by the end of this year. Auditorium upgrades, again, what I'm looking at there is that, you know, we haven't upgraded the sound systems and the lights and anything in the auditorium for nearly seventeen, eighteen years since we put it in. We bits and piece it, but just to kind of look to see what else we need to do to bring that up to great. I would note a potential problem here. I was dividing the MCA fifteen-ton AC unit. It will come out of the auditorium upgrades as well. So just so you know, it's listed there. That security divider, that's probably gonna exceed a hundred thousand. So we need to update that, Tammy, before Thursday. But that main AC in the auditorium is out, has been out, and we're basically relying on the other outside units to keep things cooled. And that's gonna be twenty thousand, and that's with us doing it internally. Their initial estimate was upwards of close to forty thousand. So as we keep going, I really would love to be able to renovate that gym at the middle school. And what I mean by that is the floor, the bleachers are pretty close to being unsafe. We had a gentleman come the other day. They're rickety. Sometimes they come out and sometimes they don't. The color scheme is still back from whenever they were, I guess, the thunderbirds, I think. And so, but the curtains are that bright blue and the bleachers are blue. But truly, we're looking to get an estimate on the bleachers here probably within the next week or two, and we'll have a better number of doing this. The kitchen project is going well. We still allocated the remaining part of the overall project in there at one point three. We've had made some payments towards that, and I think that we're on track probably for a one October ninety-five percent completion. And what I mean by that is this, that we know the freezer is delayed, but that will not stop us if we decide to flip. We can still run. But we have some, the equipment needs to be installed this week. We are going to expect to see the AC. They turned on half of the ACs today. They were functional, so they're already starting to have air put in there. The flooring is, will now be done because they were able to get the AC running. They can put the flooring in so it doesn't swell. And then the windows are due in at the end of this week, so we're gonna see a lot of movement in that coming here, and we're still on track budget-wise for the kitchen. So as we go, if we get into the new kitchen, then we have to make a decision on Oak Grove. And so to raise Oak Grove, estimate would be around two hundred thousand, and primarily that's due to you have to do the asbestos and all the things that go along with it and haul it off. But the intent would be to open that up and make it majority of it green space and make it a beautiful entranceway to truly to the middle school. Gas line at the middle school that was in front of that window opening, that's been moved. That's done. Came in very close to our estimate that we budgeted. You know, there were two parties in that. One was Atlanta Gas and the other was the McQuakes. Two different responsibilities with it, but they moved it around the corner, and now the front of the building looks great. Gym sound system, with that and the other system, you know, that's, trying to make sure we make that work. The seven thousand for technology fiber, if we cut off Oak Grove, we'll still need to run fiber over to the building that's there. And then it says, we painted Todd Grant, we came in at nineteen thousand under budget on that part. So again, the money's there. We're managing it well. But if then you look out further, there's a couple of the big things that need to be looked at. The buses that we ordered, those six new buses that we don't expect them to come in until the next fiscal year. So we would allocate that nearly four hundred thousand to pay for those buses. Then you have technology upgrades that just continue after that. We need to start putting money away for the roof project. And so come the end of twenty-five, twenty-six school year, that's when we'll look to probably have to put a new roof in. We're starting to see some leaks here, leaks there that we typically patch, but that's gonna cost us a lot of money, and we only anticipate getting about six hundred thousand from the state. Culinary Arts Kitchen is, if you've been there, the supervisory responsibility of Chef Collins is very difficult because he has a group over here, a group over here, a group over here, and there's walls and divides. So what we'd like to do is have him kind of redesign what he liked, that kitchen really look at and flow, and then figure out what we can do internally and make that a more modern kitchen, because it is one of our major pathways, but also make it so that he can see what's going on in the room and make it safe. We do need a new welcome sign at MCA. We've talked about that. The digital sign part of it was out, and you can only read part of it. I was told that those signs that are in existence were actually on a different pole, and then they encased it with the brick, so we'll play with that. But we'll start getting estimates on digital signs out there. We did talk about a pole barn, one for transportation. But also, part of the classroom money that we had allocated earlier, really started to look heavy at the potential to put a pole barn out at the high school for ag so that maybe they can start turning towards livestock as part of their overall education. And I think if they were able to pick up on taking care of pigs, there's a lot of money in that for kids. Really is. Taking care of them, and Mr. Deverger is excited if we can make that happen, and I'd like to be able to pursue and look at everything possible to advance that and extend that opportunity. So basically, what you'll see here is these are the special projects that we have over the next five years. And, you know, funding-wise, Tammy and I have managed and budgeted that out, and we can do this. We can make this happen. So I will ask if there's any questions based on what's here, if you think that there's something that we need to take off, if you think there's something we need to add. Please let me know what your thoughts are. And that's a lot of information. I did give it to you. This is pretty much what we gave you last year and the year before at budgets. But this is an updated version of it. Any questions on any of that? Okay.
Oh, maybe.
There is one other slide that has to do with the CARES Act dealing with this as well. And again, this is more in line with where we are right now with technology and security upgrades. These are the things we're putting into effect right now based on everything that happened in Uvalde. That we wanna make sure that we have cameras in place and that we, you know, we put things in there that really are gonna enhance our security. The Todd Grant Elementary School and the Middle School, we've stepped up there, and now our focus is on the high school and getting that ready. Any questions on any of that? And again, that comes right out of ESAR, and it's permissible by ESAR standards.
We're still waiting on the information on the divide at the high school.
We are. I had a conversation with Mr. Tuten. We brought in an engineer to look at, you know, what, why. We brought in a, an engineer to look at, you know, what, what I'd like to see happen. And just so that everybody understands that right now, if somebody follows behind somebody at the high school, um, they might be able to have free access into the school. And so to put a, and I'll call it a, a containment wall, but a secondary wall that once visitors come in, they then are, have to go into the central office and, and over to see the receptionist. But then also to cut a hole in the wall with the door that they don't go back out and get buzzed in because then somebody goes right behind them. But right in front of the receptionist, they were saying, okay, you can go down now and they'll be freed up. So Mr. Tooten is working up the plans for that and the cost. Uh, I will say that five years ago, the cost was something like sixty to seventy thousand. You know it's going to be up at least twenty percent more than that based on everything that's, that's going on. But I do believe that's a necessity. Um, and it, and it's similar to what we already have at both the middle school and the elementary school, just in a different fashion. All right, so, uh, any questions on, on any of those issues? If not, I'll, I'll go to the next one. There is a nineteen ninety-three red Ford F-150 that's been out at the high school for a very long time. Uh, I think they kind of drive around more like a golf cart than a, than a truck. But it's, it's already exceeded its service and we'd like to go ahead and add it to the surplus list. And if anybody wants to try to pick it up, but it's a, it's an old one. Um, and it's probably time that it, that it's exceeded its, its cause. There's a need to transfer five hundred thousand out of the local projects account to the general operating. That takes care of our September payroll. Um, if you realize that we're, we're, we have pots of money. Um, we're in good financial standing and Tammy's going to go through that in a minute. But by moving the money from local projects to general, we then also will start getting our tax money back in. But somewhere around October, we'll start running that in, so it keeps it balanced. And that way we don't have to get a ten, um, to keep things going. And then at this point, Tammy, you're up to talk about our financials.
Okay, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
General operating account, we began from August of one point six million. We have a six, a one point seven million and dispersments of just over two million. Uh, maybe us with a million and three as, as of October thirty-first in the general operating account. Page twenty-six, next page, uh, revenues with the school year sixteen point six six percent complete. We have three hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars in general fund revenues, which is two point five eight percent of our budgeted fifteen point three million in general fund revenues.
Tammy, what's our, what month do we really get the bulk of?
The taxes?
Yeah.
November, December, January, in that range. Usually by then we got the bulk of it.
And when will we start getting QBE at?
QBE, we will start re, recording QBE revenue in, um, September.
Okay, so we'll start getting that money in.
Everything up through August thirty-first is a pool for taxes, for QBE, all that. So that's why the revenue looks so low for July and August. But we'll start recording new receipts in September.
Good, thank you.
Uh, page twenty-eight expenditures. We have, we have a million two in general fund expenditures, which is seven point nine two percent of our budgeted fifteen point four million dollars in general fund expenditures. Fund balance on page thirty-one, the current fund balance is one point seven million. On to page one hundred and eleven, school nutrition, school nutrition balance is two hundred and forty-eight thousand. Page one twenty-two, local projects, we have two point two eight million in the local projects account.
So we transfer the five hundred thousand, that'll bring it down, but then we'll go back up.
Uh, money market account, we still have a million dollars in there. We could have transferred money from the money market account, but the earned one was in the money market account.
A lot of money and the interest.
We decided to leave that in there and just move the.
We're literally making three and four times what we have for years by leaving it in there. I mean, it's, it's been good for us.
Page one twenty-seven, the Georgia Fund One account. Uh, we have these swaths receipts of a hundred and fifty-nine thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars. Notice the August interest was over two thousand dollars in that account. Um, we did, um, transfer the energy lease, five hundred and forty thousand two hundred and twelve dollars and leaving us with a balance of one point one million in the Georgia Fund One account. Uh, just to note, the August twenty-two swaths is even though we are not seeing the double digits, we are still seeing, um, a percentage increase. It was five point six percent higher than the August receipts from twenty-twenty-one. So like I said, we're not getting double digits, but we are still seeing increase every month, so. Positive news. And if you also look at that page, I would kind of look at the interest earned, um, since we moved the money in the Georgia Fund One account back in February.
Oh, wow.
Compared to what we were earning for years.
Mm-hmm.
So, good move.
Very good.
Are there any questions over any of that?
No, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Franklin. All right, so, uh, the next item is the discussion amendments from previous meetings. And again, I would just ask the board members to take a look at those. If you have any issues to get with me or Ms. Lane, and we'll update them before they are voted on. Um, item number eight is board policy, it's a use of school facilities. It's now under thirty-day review, um, what I've asked again. And, and Mr. Braun, you, I think you said there was one thing I needed to add to and I, and I didn't get with you. But if you can help me do that before we approve it so we can have that, I'd appreciate it.
It's actually to the form of Dr. Poles, who just needs to reference that statute.
Okay.
That, that doesn't have anything to do with the substance of the policy.
Okay, so whatever, whatever I need to add to that, if, if you could help me with that.
Yes, sir.
The legal aspect of it.
No, it won't change the event of policy.
Yeah, basically, we've gone through this, this is a, this is a shift in what we've done in the past as far as the process and how we allow it to happen. It also gives specific guidance on this one regarding, um, insurance if it's needed. It gives guidance that says if you need security, that, you know, we use the local sheriff's office. Um, it also details as well with a change of the amounts that we're charging for the use of facilities. And so if you hadn't had a chance to read through it, if you would do so, um, we did increase the costs and they haven't been increased in nearly two decades. And so, uh, it brings it more in line with where we're at. But that is close to our thirty-day mark. And I, I'd like to ask if we can consider, uh, for Thursday, if the board consider if there was any changes that need to be made, voting on it for approval. All right. Next item up is the, uh, facilities in operation. If, uh, Mr. Musa, would you step forward, please?
Great evening, board, it's a pleasure to be here. Um, I have to say that Dr. Poles did an outstanding job talking about the middle school kitchen project. As he was saying, that we're still looking for the, uh, October one, um, completion date. Hopefully, uh, everything will come together, the windows are going to be in, the tile looks amazing. I've been taking, um, pictures of it on a regular basis and will be able to provide a, a really great slideshow of the progression of how things are going. Um, a big move was flipping that electricity on for the first time. That's a dangerous job and, and it worked out for a good reason.
They, they were able to pull from the main box through the hallways, these huge electrical cables and create, and put it into the one that's next to the kitchen and flipped the switch. And, and it was, it was perfect there. That's one of the most dangerous parts of anything like this and Friday evening they flipped it and everything was good.
And we, like Dr. Poles saying, we'll see some, a lot of movement now that the AC is in there. The tile in the main cafeteria area is going to be put down and that will make a dramatic impact on where, where it looks like and obviously those. Solar panels, um, I've been presenting on solar panels for months now and, um, keep saying we're close. And again, I said we're very close. Georgia Power has the information needed to do their audit. They have told us that it takes approximately two weeks for them to, two to three weeks for them to complete a, um, a, a, an audit of all the electricity that is supposed to come in and come out and what it will do and then have approval from Georgia Power. So within the next three weeks, we're hoping to flip the switch to say, um, we've officially started. So we're very, very, very close on that. Been in contact with Georgia Power and all the solar people and that, that's where we are on the time.
They call it an impact study and so they're going to conduct that. And once they're done, if there are anything they need to switch or change, they'll have it. One of the most important parts of this is to make sure that it's safely done. And so not much different than moving the, the power from the one main panel to the, to the new panel is that we're, we're going to be going through an electrical network that we want to make sure is done right. Um, you know, there, there have been issues in the past with other places, but I do know that there's, the safety precautions that they're taking exceed what we normally would have.
Baseball softball field lights change out. I want to give, um, Coastal Electric a very big thank you and shout out for, um, stepping up to the plate, completing the agreement that they made with us years ago. We were on a payment plan for the baseball and softball lights, um, and on the practice field. And we paid that off approximately two years ago. And we were going through our notes, we came across that at the end of it, they would replace every light. They would readjust them and make sure that when they left their agreement, that we had a, a brand new system, basically. And so for our baseball and softball field and the practice field, there are all new lights in there, readjusted and pointing in the right direction, all working with new bulbs. And, um, we have some time on that. So they've done a great job stepping up to the plate, they did a great job, um, low impact, got it done and completed the agreement. We can, I'm very thankful for our partnership.
That is a significant thing because again, we just caught it when we were looking to see about the lights at the auditorium or in the, in the stadium. And when Ms. Franklin gave me the thing, it, it's clearly said on the bottom of that that they would do what Mr. Musa just said. And so we just called him and said, are you going to honor this? And they said yes, came in and did it. And that says an awful lot for that company. And so I do want to make sure that we send them a letter. Um, one, recognizing the fact that they kept their, they kept their part of the deal on that and that we appreciate everything that they did.
Yep.
All right, you have the COVID update real quick, even though I said it.
Yes, um, knock on wood, we are at zero cases in the county. However, uh, that would be remiss to say that we are still following instead of COVID protocol, um, best practices of being generally safe with our, um, washing hands, social distancing, staying home when you're sick and making sure that, um, we just don't ignore COVID, um, and ignore general safety practices. So we're still talking about that and still conscious of being able to do the right thing at the right time.
Absolutely.
All right, next item up here is the security update. Why don't you stay right there, Mr. Musa, just so we know. Pull up those signs if you will, please. So as part of our security review, we, you know, we've had a lot of discussions with law enforcement and homeland security, et cetera. But if, if you haven't noticed these signs, uh, we have, these are pervasive throughout our campuses. And just wanted you to see what we put in there. So the, the first one, uh, go back to the very first one again, um, that we have armed people, that they're trained, okay? In the event that something happens, they're going to be met with deadly force.
Good deal.
Second one. Second, there you go. Um, I, part of this is, is when you, when you look at the campus over here, people are coming through and just walking around, going through all cars. We've shut down seventeen after students get in, that's made a difference. But we also want anybody that happens to come back in and still do the same thing. They need to report immediately to the front office in, in order to make sure that they're doing conducted business. And they're not just wandering around and, and, uh, and that they're, the potential that they're there for nefarious reasons. And we want to make sure we clean it up. Next one. Um, on, on the gate at the high school and the gate now over here at Todd Grant, we're putting up a sign that basically it, it's locked. Um, we want to make sure those gates are locked, but they call this number, somebody comes out and they unlock the gate. We also have a schedule typically of when the trash truck comes, so they can anticipate it. But that has been good. And as I've said before, security can be very inconvenient, but it's inconvenient for the purposes of making sure we take care of our, our students, our staff and our faculty and our, and our other visitors that come on. Next one that's up there. Um, it's important also to note that all of our campuses are considered a school safety zone. And so, uh, Mr. Braun and I talked about this. There is a special provision in the law that says you cannot carry a weapon in a school safety zone. We've, we've identified this and, and there are provisions that allow for it are very detailed. But anyone else, for example, now that we have open carry, open concealed, or concealed as well, that if somebody shows up at, let's just say Todd Grant, and they happen to, you know, carry a pistol, uh, if they're not one of those individuals that we're allowed to, to carry, they're not allowed to carry that into our school. And that they might very well be prosecuted for it as a result. Uh, that's important to know as well that, you know, the law does provide they can have it in their vehicle, et cetera. They can, they can have it there when they pick up their, their children, but they can't get out with it and go into the school to pick up their children. And that, that's the point we want to make sure, so that is again conspicuously placed on, on the board. Uh, the last slide that's up here again, as our flow of traffic has been so good. I went over there at three oh seven today and there were only a couple of students left to be picked up. It's, it's rolling. And so that Car Rider Pro and the system that Ms. Riles has put in place to, to make that work has been great. Uh, we did run into a little problem where a lot of the cars are trying to block the intersection to be next, but this sign will be up there to, to curtail that as well. So a lot of good things that are, that are taking place and, and we still have a lot of security measures that we're implementing, but wanted the board to come and see where we're at. Any thoughts you'd like to add to that, Mr. Musa?
I think that the signage has been a great addition. It's, um, very visible and, um, can't get around not seeing what we're posting up there and it makes a, I think, a big impact.
All right, next one up here is the enrollment. We just wanted to make the board aware, I know I sent a, a text message out to y'all at some point, but it is, it stands today for enrollment. So you'll see there compared to the right is the same timeframe of last year. And what you'll see is that this year we have thirteen hundred and thirty-one students enrolled as of today. Last year, we had twelve hundred and fifty-six. So that's a gain of seventy-five overall students. So with that comes more FTE, with that comes more maintenance of effort, with that comes a lot of different things. But, um, as a whole, Macintosh is growing. And I think that's, that has a positive reflections on how well the schools are doing. And I just wanted the board to be aware of what's happening there. Any questions on the FTE? We will have an FTE count coming soon, I think, uh, first week of October, it's not that far away. Then everything starts to, to jump in from there. All right, just, uh, for some information purposes, again, we do celebrate the, uh, breast cancer awareness that takes place in October. And so we're going to participate in the Friday evening pink out. And so I know they're selling shirts, if you're interested in buying one, I think you can contact the high school and, but otherwise, if you don't want one of the T-shirts, we just would ask you to consider wearing pink on the night of the football, especially during that day. Um, I had a, I had a good meeting with Mr. Willis last year and said, you know, COVID's wound up, it's time to make the experience for our kids, uh, a little bit more traditional. And I asked if we would consider doing a, a homecoming parade. And so they have a sponsor, they're organizing it. Um, I think it's going to be a great event for our students to be able to, to participate in a homecoming parade. The event is scheduled for Thursday, October sixth. Um, I know that we have asked whether or not the board would like to participate. And if you give that some thought, maybe we can get together and join in and either maybe we can get a golf cart. Uh, I don't know if the city's there, but I know that Richie has a, a very nice golf cart for the city. Do you still have that, Mr. Brown? City guy, yeah.
I have, I have a Cincy.
You have a Cincy. Awesome, awesome. So, um, again, I think it would be great if the, if we can get together and, and show our support for our, for our students and, and for our.
That sounds good to me.
Awesome, awesome. All right, uh, so next area up here is goal area four, quality workforce. You know, every two years we review our flexible benefits. That's your life insurance, your sh, long-term disability, your dental, your vision, all those type of things. So, uh, a couple of years ago, we did away with a, with a company that we had for years, but their prices just kept going up and up and up. So we have, um, a very good program and, uh, with the Partners Benefits Group that we bought into a couple of years ago, it's now time to renew. And so, uh, they came to us, the representative said, look, the, the life insurance company wants to increase the cost. And they, she wanted to know whether or not we need to go back out into the market. And they, she wanted to know whether or not we need to go back out into the market and get estimates. And we told her yes, we, we want to go ahead and let's see what you get out of it. Well, we came in and there was a company willing to give us the same rates we have today. And so I asked our representative, Leighton, I said, Leighton, go back to Sun Life and see if they will, again, keep it at the same rate, knowing that another company. That makes it easier for the transitions, we're not worried about coverage, um, and Sun Life agreed. So it worked out to our benefit, we stayed at the same rate. The only thing that will go up and would have gone up regardless is dental. Um, I think that basically is an industry-wide thing that, that's taking place. Um, but I, I do applaud the, the efforts of, of Robin Moles and working with the group on getting that done. I do have some things for personnel and executive session. Um, if I go to the next area, under goal area five, community engagement. So Senate Bill five eight eight is, um, was a new law put in place. And basically, the gist of Senate Law, uh, uh, five eight eight was that we needed to develop a rules of conduct for public participation, and publish that before the first of October. And there were a couple of parameters that were in there that dealt with, you know, how much notice, what exactly is a disruption, and what would constitute a removal. So what it, the reason that Senate Bill came about was that there were some things across the country where people were being arrested, uh, for disrupting a, a public meeting, and then they would argue that, well, what is a disruption? And they would, they would prevail. And so this came about to say, well, let's put it in writing. If you do this at a board meeting, that the board chair or the vice or whoever's in charge of the hearing can stop and then also have somebody removed, i- if they exceed what we've put in place. So, uh, I took the liberty and created this based on me reading a whole bunch of other policies. I was waiting for GSBA to give us something. Um, last week, GSBA finally gave us something. Most of what I put in here, they had as well, with one exception, and, uh, that I'd like you to think about. The way the actual law runs, which is, I think, um, fifty-eight, uh, Senate Bill fifty-eight that required us to have a public participation portion on every regular business meeting, you have to have a public participation part. But that you could not require them to sign up more than twenty-four hours in advance. Now, the GSBA recommended policy puts in there that they must sign up within the twenty-four hours prior to the board meeting. We allow them to sign up before six o'clock. That's a little different, now there are pros and cons to it. Uh, the pros are that we're stating that if you, if it's about personnel dealing in the, in the district, um, have you been to the principal, have you been to the superintendent? All of those should happen before they even utter a word at the podium. And so I still believe we can accomplish the same by having them sign the affidavit, and saying, when they come up to the board and sign up that they, if this is dealing with a personnel matter, have you done this? Yes. Have you done this? Yes, before they are allowed to come up. But that's up to the board, how they want to, how you want to see that policy or that rule. Um, it is not meant to be a policy, and I, I have retracted that. It's meant to be something that we can change when we need to, but we have to publish it. And then the, also said that the bump, the actual board policy should reflect that we're going to offer it, and that we're going to, the adherence that I put in there is that the board chair has that authority to say, i- if you're a disruption, we're shutting you down. And then, that you could also be removed, and that we're putting in a provision that says, we removed Sally from the board meeting because she was vulgar or abusive, or whatever those reasons are, that I would meet with them after the fact and say, you know, what happened? And set the parameters, and come to the board with a recommendation that says, you know, maybe it's for a year, maybe it's permanent, whatever that is. Um, but what that's detailed in there as well, and then the other part of it clearly is that the law dictates that be- before August first of each year, you have to review them again. So those are the two documents. I would ask if you'll spend a little time on them, and, and really read them, and see if you have any issue with any of the suggestions that, that I put in those drafts. But it's about acting right in public, and it also extends that it's not just the person at the podium, it's the person out in the audience that wants, wants to speak up and say something, or holds up a sign. We're forbidding them from doing that, they can do it outside, but they can't hear. But it also says that not only can they be escorted out of here, but they may actually be prevented from being on campus. Any general questions on that at all? I know I've sent this to each of you to already look at, but if you'll take another look at it. Um, but we need to have something approved for Thursday's meeting, so we can have it up by the first.
Would we have a, let's say if you come in to speak, would there be a copy?
There would be posted on that wall.
Okay.
And that, also the sign-in sheet, when they sign it, they're acknowledging that they have read them, and they understand them, and they're going to hear to them.
Yep.
And I think that's important, it's not just a, hey, surprise, here's what it is.
Right, right.
But I'd like to have a poster put up right where they sign in, so there's no ambiguity of it. And then it's also on here, but I didn't want to do that until the board agrees with, with the standards.
And also the, the addition on the sign-in sheet that they have gone through the proper channels to.
Absolutely. I, I, and I, and I know to, to act with the board wants to hear from our citizens of McIntosh, okay, and, and the taxpayers and everybody here. Um, but it's, at the same point, there are protocols in place that you should go through before it automatically jumps to a school board, and that's what this place.
Well, I would hate for someone to come in and speak and, you know, for an issue that could have easily been handled if they would have just talked to the teacher or the principal. Not that we don't want to hear from the community, but, you know, that it could have been resolved without having to come up and, and bring it to us.
The majority of the people that come up, those issues are resolved at the lower level. And had they started there, they would have been resolved. We do care, and we do tr- do our best to make sure we resolve those issues.
No, I agree, that's the way that should be, that should process. If you recall, historically, it was probably one of the few histories, we actually had a board member arrested and, and removed. Uh, and, you know, you find that, I don't know, the statute of disrupting a public meeting was heavily constitutional, so you had to come up with these other standards, and the court kind of told us what you can and can't do in order to enforce that, and this dovetails with the court's overall, you know, this is enforceable, it's legal, and it's just the right thing to do.
Absolutely. All right, if you happen to read through it between now and Thursday and say, hey, how about, if you'll let me know, um, I'd appreciate it, okay? All right, uh, next item up here is, and Mr. Masada, would you come up and talk about this for me, please? This is the request to use the gymnasium by the, um, professional basketball team. And so, um, if you can open that up and go through it.
All right, if you read that over, that's, um, a pretty straightforward document request. Um, the, he was not able to make it this evening, he was out of town, so, um, he wanted to be here and, and see what the official vote is. I talked to him this weekend, he understands the usage gym facility usage fees, um, and will abide by, um, just renting out the gym, just like a, anybody that would, would rent it out. So, um, I think that the security, he was assured me that he would provide all the security that was needed, and, um, that this is an opportunity also for our sports program to, um, also make some financial gains by being able to do some concessions, by, um, being able to, um, do some things that will be a fundraiser for them. So they did a great partnership, I think that, um, it's a, an idea that's cutting-edge and new to McIntosh, and, um, I wanted to say that there's a lot of things for our kids to do that aren't, isn't always positive. But for something that come out and see some, um, athletes and be part of something that's, um, bigger than just high school basketball, might be a, a really good opportunity for kids to see that there, there's, um, ways to spend your time that are good and wholesome. So I think that is, um, an idea that we were considering.
I, I will tell you this, again, in our, in the policy, uh, he would be required to carry the million-dollar li- liability insurance. He'd have to use the sheriff's office, the deputies for security. It, it ends up being a hundred dollars an hour, so each of these events is six hours, so it's six hundred dollars. Um, the custodian fee is also, would be added to this. The, the overall part of this is that because the policy that I'm asking you all to approve is that typically, these are just handled by Mr. Masada, but we want to say if it's for multiple days, that the board approve it. So that's why it's sitting in, in front of you, so. And he's asking for those open weekends, and then the league, basically it ends up being about twelve days overall. Um, but that if the board agrees to it, that Mr. Braun and I will work on an actual contract that meets the requirements that are in place.
Dr. Poulos, we went through, um, these days to make sure that it don't interrupt anything that the school has already had set up.
W- we don't have dates set yet, Mr. McGyver, but part of the policy is that any need that's there for our students is always first, always, no matter what.
I was also saying that there is, um, the ability to close doors that will close off the school hallway so that, um, we would just have cafeteria and gym, but, um, cafeteria seating area, obviously not kitchen area, and gym, um, come in, come out, so.
And, and the, the other important part of this is that, and Mr. Braun and I will work on the details. But let's say they go to their first basketball game and there's a, there's an issue. We cut it off, you're done. And I think that need, that will be a clause in there that, that is plain and simple. This is a, this is us deviating from what we've done for years. Um, but I do think that as a community as a whole, I've heard positive things from people who want this to happen. Um, but at the same time, we have to protect our interests and our, our facilities in the process.
And Dr. Poulos, I did hear him say that, um, when he did share such a live time, that this would also offer an opportunity of mentoring for some of these kids, um, in, with his team. So, uh, some of these guys would be, um, offering mentorship to, um, some of the kids. So that would be an opportunity too, I did remember him sharing that.
He did, and, and his contracts that he has with players is pretty detailed. He expects a lot of them, especially regarding behavior. Uh, and he wants to be able to say that we are a professional team, we're not just a, a group that gets together on a weekend.
That's right.
Any questions on any of that as it stands? And if, uh, if you have any questions afterwards, just feel free to get ahold of me or Mr. Masada.
The only thing I have is, um, ability to tape the NBA lines on the floor. Um, that's a new floor we've got. Uh, what's to say, we put the tape down, we pull it up, there goes our new floor.
And, and I think that, I, he did mention that, and I'll go through that to determine whether or not that's successful. Because if it's, if it's something that's going to ruin the floor, then the whole thing might be off.
Right.
I think they, I think they have it designed just for them to be able to put down on the floor and take it back up. I, because they've done this many times before, according to what I've read, so, um, they won't be just coming in and not be able to do it and not be able to get it back up. I think they've done this before where they know how to do it well.
They, they do, I, I do think that he's mentioned it, and I have the same concern as Mr. Hewlett, and I asked him, I said, look, I need to know what this is before we accept that, so.
It's been done in other high schools, and I'm sure, um, it's a standard procedure.
All right, barring any, any questions on that, um, I would like to give on the next item, is Twenty First Century Grant. They are up and running. I would tell you, right now, the, the first week, there was between the Twenty First Century and the Boys and Girls Club, a hundred and twenty-five of our students participating in one fashion or another from pre-K up to second grade in the Twenty First Century, and then third through five over at the, uh, Oak Grove area. A great, great aspect of it, we have teachers involved, teachers are getting paid by the Boys and Girls Club to do it, parapros are being paid, um, to do that. And, um, we're, the focus is obviously, they have a dis- a requirement through the Twenty First Century to focus on literacy and math skills as well as fine arts. So, you know, we're hoping to be able to add art, as well as potential to add vocal and/or, um, our band program in, included in it. So just kind of giving that, remember that this is three hundred and fifty thousand a year that the Boys and Girls Club, they're the fiscal agent on it, but that they're able to take care of our kids, and our kids are, are really being able to, to take advantage of it. And I was astonished the first day to see all the kids just lined up, heading over to, to do this. It's been a good thing so far. All right, next area there, um, I don't know where this is written, so I, I'm going to say that upfront, but both libraries typically have a board, and in their bylaws, the school board appoints certain numbers of members on them. Um, but at Sappolo, they had an opening, and, um, I know that Mr. McGyver and I spoke about it, and Claudia Myers stepped up and said she would like to do it, and sa- at Sappolo Hammond. And then we've had two appointees, that Laura Evans and Tiffany King for the Idaho Hilton Public Library, that would be our representatives on the panel, but that would just need a board vote to say that they're there. Uh, I would, I know that there's a letter in here on the, on the one, I believe it's a, maybe a two or three-year term, um, but I'll double check that.
Three years.
Three years, okay. All right, next item up here is our, our, just our culmination of our dedication events, and so if you can slide there. So I, I just appreciate the participation of, of our board members, uh, in the community coming out to recognize the outstanding individuals that we recognize for their meritorious service with both Flo and Reggie Jackson, with the band room at the high school, and then Ms., Ms. Mother Hunter at the high school with the media center, and then, uh, with Avella Brown, just a rededication. And again, um, I've heard great comments about it, and appreciate the board's willingness and that their action on dedicating those rooms and those facilities, uh, they turned out great. So thank you for all that. Madam Chair, barring, um, anything else, I would like to ask if we go into executive session for personnel.
Have a motion to go to executive session for personnel?
Motion.
Motion.
He can have.
Ms. McDonald raised her hand. All right, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hewlett, all those in favor? Motion carries four zero. Okay, we will return. All right. Okay, McIntosh County Board of Education had adjourned to executive session to discuss personnel. Could I have a motion to return to open session?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Hewlett, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. McDonald, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. All right, Superintendent recommends personnel report as submitted, could I have a motion? Okay, motion by Ms. McDonald, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. McGyver, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. Okay, um, what comments?
Progress reports go out there, thank you, and I'm excited that we're already at our, our midpoint of the halfway to this first semester, and things are going well, and, um, I'm just excited about that.
My turn. Um, I just want to thank our, our dedicated teachers, um, they don't get thanks enough, so, uh, they, um, they, they're in the trenches, so thanks to them, they're, they're doing a fine job. And, um, I'm excited about our enrollment going up. I like going up, that's, that's good. Um, folks moving in, more money, so. Um, oh, we're playing football Friday night at MCA, all right. I think, good deal. I think Lanier County, is that correct?
Oh, Lanier.
Okay, all right, that's all I have, thank you.
And I would just like to welcome everyone back, and glad to hear our COVID number is zero. Keep up the good work, and put this thing behind us, and keep moving forward. Anything?
Thank you.
Mr. Braun? All right, we're adjourned.